The next building was the, I'm sorry, did anybody have any questions? The, the next one was, um, the maintenance building in the bus garage.
Yeah, the, so the maintenance building just has, the roof is sort of disintegrating, so the one right behind, over here, yeah. But the, the gutters and down the south, they're falling, disintegrating, the roof needs replacement, that's probably been put in here. The low part is a metal roof and then the high, the high part on the end was a membrane roof, so we just replaced with the same kind on that. Um, but that would be new roof, new gutter and down style system included in that. On the bus garage, from our conversations with the guys over there, they, they wanted to be able to, with buses getting longer, they wanted to be able to pull it in and completely close the doors, be able to do their work, so that would include a twelve foot extension of the whole building. So we would take off the roof, um, new walls, foundation walls to extend the building twelve feet and then new roof framing, new roof, um, new exterior wall on that end part.
Is it twelve, is it twelve foot, just one bay then, on the front end?
Well, we make all, all the bays twelve foot.
So it'd actually be on the short, on the, not the middle end, but the short end, wider. And then also a part of that scope of work would be a new canopy, um, over near the gas.
And so as a part of that, we included the allowance for it, but as part of that canopy project, we would ask to, um, check to make sure that the secondary containment around that tank is, is adequate. Make, make sure that it meets current spill protection requirements with the PDEC.
Well, actually, um, it's been discussed a little bit too about getting the bigger type.
So, so if, if that's the case, if, if that's the case, we've got to make sure that the, the, the height for that secondary containment is in direct relation to the amount of storage that you have. And so that would have some effect on the canopy, so it's sort of a trickle, a trickle effect. And so that, that, that capacity needs to be checked and then also your spill protection plan is make sure that it's current at the day and, uh, I'm sorry.
That addition would be, um, along the long, one of the long sides of the building towards the drive will carry it down the hill where they aren't lining buses up. Would be bringing that, um, wall with overhead doors, bring that wall out, make the bays twelve foot deeper.
So if, if you, if you did decide to, that can't be above, above the tank, um, there's some things that need, would need to be checked before the architecture piece of that is accomplished. Uh, in case you did, did we get the new tank within, uh, our environmental guys can look at that secondary containment to make sure that is where it needs to be. If not, then as part of that, part of that project or then there needs to be some modifications.
And, uh, the, the next project is the, uh, the reach cabinet. And I didn't think to bring a copy of it, but, um, structural engineer, I think back in August or September, he'll give a report about that. We should have included that before, at least by reference. If, if somebody has a question, maybe, but I don't, I don't think so. So I went through what's called a programming exercise and basically just a list of spaces and how big they are. And I've given that to Dr. Whittingham, uh, for him to review with staff and, um, the central office, um, to make sure that that program of spaces is going to meet your, your needs over there. Don't want to build a new building and not meet what you need. So that's kind of the first step is to make sure that that program, um, is adequate. The fourteen thousand square feet is just a little bit larger than the space that you currently have. I want to say that the current facility, almost thirteen thousand square feet, twelve seven, twelve eight, something like that. So, um, it's just a little, a little bit larger, uh, facility, but, um, we're looking at the same piece of property, um, between the current, uh, facility and that area.
And, and actually that, that, if I speak, uh, speak to that property, that's actually two parcels that you own. And so the way the post school is selling, sorry, just traveling, that property line that's common between the two parcels and that would need to be replatted. The state statute doesn't allow you to build across property lines and so that, that, those two lots would need to be consolidated. And generally that's a, a planning, a survey, planning commission action, uh, and that removes that interior parcel line and makes it clean to where it can be built across.
Even though you own both, both parcels, it's, it's not a difficult hurdle to cross, it's just.
It's just process.
The regulatory matter to.
You may not know the answer yet, but does it, you think it's feasible to build that, leave the current one standing until it's done? I know we talked a little bit about.
Yeah, I, I, I think so, I think so. We've not done, um, I'm not asking you to do kind of a, a site plan or a layout to make sure that.
But also speaking to that, there's a very wet area where, and I would ask that you let our environmental folks do a phase one site assessment on that. See if there's, that's, get that to be characterized as a wetlands and, and make sure that it can't be characterized as a wetlands. And, and declare that question because this is very swampy, very organic right there. Uh, we just need to get that question and then just check more.
A little bit of environmental, um, work and a little bit of geotechnical work there before we go to a whole lot of trouble.
Yeah.
And then, um, the next school was, uh, Ritten. Again, same bound and block systems that we saw in some gun schools. There was, um, uh, there was one area down there in the library that had some, um, deterioration of exterior, uh, brick veneer. Corner of the library that, that we looked at, um, got some planning and budget dollars in there. Um, new bleachers on one side, I think the other side had, had to replace.
Yeah, bleachers being replaced, home side is off.
Yeah, yeah, so it is, um, when was that done?
Oh, it's back to here, I don't care if it's back to here.
But, uh, still not enough that it does need to be replaced as well. And showed a, a, a small six classroom addition there, um, off one of the hallways. Um, and again, the same ADA upgrades in the existing restroom. Um, and then also, uh, expanded, not, not kitchen area, but cafeteria, the seating area, uh, expanding the seating there at the, at the cafeteria. And there, there were several areas, um, um, brought our attention, about roof leaks throughout the building. And I, I couldn't find the right reason, there's not, uh, might be one here and then.
First come around, we come down the hallway, they had it tore up one end, so.
That, uh, a line item for, um, roof repairs there.
So the six classroom addition would go out on this, I said, here's a gem.
I said six, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's four.
Yeah, one, one of those is, uh, new restrooms. New restrooms, I'm sorry.
If that connection didn't work, we'd have to relocate those.
And then that, that existing door out the end of the classroom there, um, is it buses that boat down there? Yeah, yeah, so there's some site work there, um, to improve that sidewalk and access from the building down to, uh, the bus area as well.
Yeah, so, yeah, question on the gym floor there, so on the cost page, it says replace gym floor, the heater, it says sand and refinish. Well, that floor has, it can't be sanded and refinished anymore.
It should be replaced.
Yeah, they done told us that.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
The guy that comes down, he's down with, it's done past the nailhead.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's replaced because we can't refinish that.
No, it, it, that is a replacement, that, okay, legs.
So as far as site work, the, there's three location where exterior stairs needs quite a bit of work. There's exterior stairs coming down to the playground that needs to be color replaced, they, they look, uh, but they, they are beyond certain purpose currently. There it is, where the loading area is, the stairs there need a cheap wall, it's sort of washed up right there, it needs a cheap wall and a handrail. So you might have to replace it while you're in there, uh, and John Eagle here are another area. Uh, and then, I've got, I've got to say, you've got one of the best playgrounds I've ever seen over at Ritten School, Mr. Stevens. Uh, the, the, the fence, that whole area over there was, was a big request and so that's going, there's a big number here, big number here for site fencing, fencing the playground area over there. Uh, and also we've got a big number in here to replace some pavement. The drive coming into the school is pretty cracked and pretty broken and so they, they need some work underneath it. And then over in the kitchen area, uh, there's some housekeeping items that we don't know there, the grease trap that sits outside, that has got, that's got the, it needs some, it needs some attention to because the, the top was off of it and, and the grass is all dead and, you know, a health department inspector has a sure sign that, that it needs to hang around a little bit because it was going around the break room. So, uh, that's the housekeeping.
With the playroom being under the classroom, is it a deal or have we, or be, be on a, have we paid no attention to the dollar?
It's included in the classroom, so this is, um, four classrooms and a playroom, I think is what.
So it's four classrooms, a playroom, and a restroom up there on that view, like sixty one, Ricky?
Yeah, I'm sure I made.
You know, if they need to be separate, they could be, but that's, the cost would increase for, you know, we need to separate areas.
How big was the playroom?
It's shown as a, as a classroom right now.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
I don't know that we have other size requirements, do you think it would need to be larger than that?
I don't know, it's, when they have PE, if it rains, they all can't have it today, can't have reach, I don't know, how big would it need to be, I don't.
So you're thinking probably something bigger than what we.
Than a regular classroom? Not really, it's him, it's the room for girls to run and play and get their hands out.
Uh, a basketball court is fifty by ninety four, so, um, maybe fifty by fifty, half of that.
Yeah, something like that.
So twenty five hundred square feet.
What's the question?
Classroom eight to nine hundred square feet.
I'd say probably double, maybe eight to two hundred.
Probably eight over there, I'm guessing, I'm just guessing, I don't know.
Forty by forty to fifty by fifty, I would think would be.
That'd be accurate, I would think, right?
We'll, we'll update, uh, with that information.
Is that location acceptable for that or would it need to be closer?
Yeah, I don't know more about that if I had it. It'd cost more if we had to move it, so if we leave it there, that'd be good.
No, I think that'd be fine. Wait, Rick was throwing on what the door is. Would you, you're in our building, made in houses on one side, right, parent road, you build naked on the one side, you try on parent road. You don't have UCM right there, that's ours, we done got four.
One, two, three, four classrooms, could possibly take this one and come out and make that bigger? Sorry, they're out.
No, no, that's true. We're, we're going to take their motor act and, and.
Yeah, we got new classrooms.
Just take it all out.
And then, um, just a little diagram showing. And then the, uh, the next one is Wilson's. I must say, that was, all of the schools were claimed the day that I visited, but Wilson was really quite, I was, I was impressed with all of the students, I'd say. Yeah, Wilson, a little different on the, um, just intercom, uh, system, could allow there. The principal walked around, ladies, some of the maintenance personnel, um, spent some time with us, walking around that day. Again, extending the canopy, uh, from where it currently ends down to the, uh, to gym lobby. Um, interior restroom renovations sprinkled throughout the building. The acoustic panels in the existing gyms, uh, and then refishing the, uh, the gym floor.
Now, on the, why did you not give the digital intercom bell system at Wilson?
I think the principal felt like what she had there was, was accurate, was accurate, so, uh, if that's something that we need to go back and take another look at.
The parts on there might actually, I need to double check, yeah, I think they're probably supposed to be.
That's what I'd be looking at if I liked you, that's all, I didn't think about it.
No, I know the answer today, no.
Well, I'm only talking to you there when I start to talk, I asked you a question, that's why I, I don't look at it.
And what, there was, there was one ring down, when you go into the, the, the front office there to the, to the cross hallway and turn right, there's one, it was almost all the way down to the end. Um, it still had some carpet in there, see it in the lower right end, uh, area of floor plan, still had some, that was in the steel carpet, so, um, take that up, go back to something. And then there's, uh, last page, supplemental arrangements, so, um, one possible scenario of what might be done in, in a typical restroom.
What is, I want to ask a dumb question here, on the, like, it says remove floor and it says replace with DCT, what is DCT? I don't like that.
It's very similar to that, it's called vinyl composition.
Okay, that's, okay, I can, that answer, no, I, I don't know, that answer.
That's the flooring though that has to be stripped and waxed every year and so that is actually the rubber that we.
I say go with that, anytime within, anything go back with that.
Yeah, it, it's, uh, it's more expensive upfront, but it's the, the life cycle costs, um, this is what.
And what kind of warranty would that have on?
I, I don't know right off, but it, it's, it's a much more durable.
It really does, doesn't it?
That's what I asked, I hope that, when first that they looked at it, started to dial.
I always like to put you on the spot, so.
We do.
I'm surprised it took an hour and twenty minutes to, to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Not that we're going to hold you to this or anything, but obviously, you know, funding and all that, that's something we got to answer the question for, we, we don't have today. But if we decided to do this program, I mean, as far as you doing next phase, planning, coming back with us, meeting again, what's the timeframe of like from now to start, what, I mean, twelve months, eighteen months? I mean, what, probably, because the reason I'm asking is when we start talking about funding, I'm kind of looking down the road of when that would happen.
Yeah, and, and if you'll notice, we put an escalation, um, in there and who knows what that is? Because who knows when, when projects are coming through, it's, um, it's depending on a lot. Um, and having said that, nobody wants to be last, um, we did a building program and, um, just speaking in generalities now, um, using an example. I'd like to group projects geographically so that we could combine projects, um, and have a little bit bigger project to get a, um, a better cut of contractor to do the work, manage the work. And so all of a sudden, instead of ten contractors and ten contracts that you're trying to manage, you're managing, you know, four or five. You can group them in groups of twos and threes, um.
We're not holding you there, man, so I'm just, I just want a rough idea when I start talking about funding.
You know, to, to, to get all of these projects done at one time is a huge challenge. So if we could break them up into smaller bid packages, um, you could work, work on them in different phases. Um, and when we get into the schematic design and the design development phases, that's going to be heavy interaction with you, the owner, the faculty and staff. Um, if, if, we, we can go as fast as the board wants to go. Um, and if we deal, um, with Dr. Whittingham and we call him with every question and we get an answer to every question, um, we can just keep right on going. Not, not to put, not to put him on, not to put him on the spot, but, you know, so if we're working with a bigger group to, to get those answers and get, get a better project. You're looking at probably twelve or fourteen months on the short end or eighteen, twenty months on the long end to get the design completed. And then you've got construction after that, so, uh, it's, I guess my answer to that question is it's not a sure, painless process.
Like I said, the reason I ask is, you know, I'm asking, I mean, um, the funding piece, I'll get, get a kind of plan that. And we start talking about that, trying to put things together, so. So any other questions?
If you go to the commission and ask for, however you're going to fund it at one time, you know, everybody's going to want, everybody's going to go for it.
That's where Dr. Whittingham comes in.
I'd make something else, man.
A, a, a minimum of the tier of here.
So any other questions from any of these folks? So when I started looking, I had Heather to print these off, that Crystal up at the last meeting, and this was the ones that we went over with these folks. And said, you take this and these is going to be left for the school board. And I looked at this number initially and I was overwhelmed, but everything on here that the school board, that I thought we'd have to go back and take an estimate of that, I don't even need these, everything's covered. So everything that we discussed is in this packet. Um, and Dr. Whittingham and I were talking, the last building program that was done was two thousand and one, and I think roughly that bond was around twenty one. Uh, this number's twenty nine, uh, obviously, um, we don't know if we can afford that right now until we start talking finances and doing all that, which is kind of our next step of, you know, planning and seeing what we want to do. Um, but when you back out reach, uh, that, you know, that building's been there forever and you back out the football stadium, I mean, you're looking at eight million dollars. Uh, you back that out of twenty nine, then we're back to the twenty one that we spent, uh, you know, to upgrade those back in two thousand and one. To, you know, eighteen, by the time we get started, it'll be twenty, uh, roughly on this. So, uh, you know, obviously, like I said, next steps would be kind of us to take this and digest this and, you know, look over it. And, uh, then we'll, we'll schedule another building committee meeting to kind of go over and talk and kind of maybe hint around with some county folks and kind of ask some questions. And, uh, obviously we've got to look at our bond we have now and the timing on it and financial factors of what a new one would cost and go from there and see, you know, the affordability of it, so, uh, go from there. So does anybody have any other questions?
And when you just, if, if you go to have that discussion with the commission, would you like any of us or the design team to go kind of immediately do what we've done here today and answer questions? Kind of helping Doff off, that would be correct?
So, so Doff has brought up about the football stadium with a track around it. So I think the consensus is right now it's about four point four million for the football stadium. And if we did, and doubt the track, and if we did do it, that's going to, that cost is going to be even more because you got to push that visitor side back and probably do some more things there, so.
The, a, a high school track is.
Yeah, you got to move the lighting.
We're going to have to move the lighting when we do the play. There is the overall dimensions on the track, so the length of the track is almost two football fields. Curves, um, and it's a football field in width. And so the, the, each, each lane of the track is four feet wide. If you have eight lanes, which is not required, um, that seems to be what everybody does, um, that's thirty two feet. So it just, it pushes things, um, that's why the length is nearly two football fields long and a football field wide. So, um, your, your straightaways are, are up in here and then up in here. And so these bleachers would have to move back and you can see that there's, there's a real tight point between, um, this last classroom addition here, the backend bleachers, and then the stairs in this corner of, of the building. So if, if you tried to put, um, you know, a thirty foot wide track in here, you're moving those bleachers back. They're going to run into the building, exactly, exactly.
So another one of those, I'm going to pose a question. If we had a piece of land already, just rough, what would it cost to build that?
So, so, so in, in two thousand and one, I did, I did the track and the football stadium and athletic complex at Ravenwood Hospital in Brentwood. And so I understand this has been almost twenty years ago and that was about two and a half million dollars.
Just for the track?
No, the track, flat legs, football field, track, bleachers, nice fieldhouse, plaza area, soccer practice fields. Out of that, the track itself is probably a million dollars because it was a rubberized track, all the drains that goes with it.
So if we had a piece of land and you just built a basic track, you're looking at a million dollars.
Made in, made in half.
Okay, and we can, we can work to find a better one. Well, that's fine, I just wondered.
But just, but just rough off the cuff, you're probably starting getting a million dollars and then accessories that go with it.
If the, if, and this is one of those hypothetical questions, but if that was feasible to put around the track, it's still a lot less trouble.
I mean, that was, that two and a half million that Ravenwood, was that project right there with the track, with the track? It was exactly what you're doing right there with the addition of the track. And the track itself and the drainage that figured out the wizard is almost fifty percent of that price. But, I mean, there's a lot to it.
So really realistic, when we can't put a track around that.
Not at this location.
Unless you buy some property and move everything.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the key, so if you put a track here, you've got to buy property and then you have to shift the existing field north, uh, towards the visitor side. And it'd be more feasible, just, if you're talking about property, just buy property, put a track next to it.
That's right.
From a purely financial standpoint?
Right, right. Yeah, one thing to consider, and when you look at it, you've got four and a half acres over here where the reach cabinet.
Reach is over here. I'm sure there are other questions, will that, Reach is over here?
Yeah. I always, that's always the fault, but you've got four and a half acres there. And so fourteen thousand square foot building and, you know, four or five parking spaces. Six, but it's going to take four and a half acres.
So with, with the new building there that we were talking about, a track would be feasible there?
We have to look at it and, I'm just talking about, you've got, you've got a big piece of, you've got a big piece of property there.
But we did look here. And it, it's, it's short, I don't remember how much, short.
But you know, if it's ten feet, still short. If, if, if you can give us a building for Reach Academy, we know about what the dimensions of the two parcels are together. And so we can do, we can play paper dolls, put a building here with some parking and see would a track behind it reintegrate into that facility. Since you've got land that you're already on and by the time you, you can get through with the Reach Academy, maybe there's more opportunity there to do, to do something.
Let me ask another silly question. Have you ever seen, well, and they may do this all the time all over the country, I don't know. But a track where the building's sitting in the middle of it? What do they use the middle of the track, is it just plain old dip?
No, I mean, you can put track and field stations in the center of it, chalk putt.
But you're not saying build, you're just saying build a track over there.
You have, you have own stations within that.
So if, 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 if we built a new building at Reach, it would be here and off to the side would be a track, it would be separate. Although that would be pretty cool. Of course, you'd have to drive over it, to walk over it and get into it. Of course, I guess at York, you got to walk across their track to get in the bleachers and.
And I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's another disproperty that's county, whether the board owns it, county or the counties. But if you give us some of this, anything, you know, we could look to see if.
Didn't it used to be a road that goes around through there?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I thought.
They never keep it up. Always had water running there.
But, but you know, at least by the Reach Academy, you could, as close as the here is at, if you need open floor parking, you've got parking here. You've got axles across the street, and so you can ask your mind all those and actually host some pretty major events there.
Well, the thing about that too, if you've got that track in the middle, I mean, they could do the track fill days on that thing. Because they normally come right back here and do that.